Display outdoor that they had with a South Shore Fire Department ladder rig and a town of Summers, Villager Summers ladder rig. They had a big 40 by 60 foot flag unfurled from it. It was just well done, highly professional, just real proud of everybody's involvement in it. So if we could just have a moment of silence for the departed Chief Bill Boma.
Thank you. So here we're going on to public comment, and I just should point out, we've got a couple of different things going on here. I've got regular public comment, which is what we're going to now, where you can speak on anything that you want to. We also have public comment during a couple of public hearings that are within this meeting as well. There is the public hearing for the budget approval that we're going through tonight. And then there's a public hearing for the comprehensive plan change that we're making to an area in the village. So there's three different times where public can speak. So the first public comment is members of the public are welcome to provide comments on any matter. Please listen for the President to recognize you. State your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. Again, so this is for anything. I don't have any public comment sheets for this, but I'm certainly happy to collect public comment sheets for this or any of the public hearings. So what you brought up, are those for general public comment, or are they for one of the hearings?
District number seven.
The TID?
I would say public comment, generally.
Okay. Okay. And that one's?
The budget.
Sure. So Adam, would you like to come up? And your name and address for the record. Make sure that the little green light is on on your microphone there.
It is not. Well, there are no green light, but I-
You're going through loud, clear.
Adam, Lance 12210, Spring Street. And my concern is, well, last time we were here, to my understanding, the company that's building all this is going to be paying for the new infrastructure going down Spring Street. There, I believe Sam was saying that they were going to pay for this and the people will not be assessed on Spring Street. There's four of us on that road. And I would like to get that in writing from you guys, that we are not going to be assessed or forced to be put on public sewer. There's four of us. I don't think that's too much to ask. And if you can't give it in writing, I'd like to know the reason why. There's four of us. I mean, that could be typed up tonight, overlook it, and by the next meeting, I think we can, that's just my main concern. Last time I was here, too, I mean, you guys tax us and tax us on that road. Thirty percent in four years. I mean, that, we don't need any more taxes out there. And of course, we're going to get taxed on the infrastructure even if the business does pay for this. We talked to Robin Palm. She told us what a TID district is, and in her email, she leaves all of us have to pay our fair share of taxes, and that the silver lining is that our property values are going to go up. I do not feel that way. I wish more of my neighbors were here. I only met them last time, but I'm here. We just simply cannot afford any more taxes on this street. It's fine that you guys are putting in. I understand everything's going to go, go up. It doesn't matter what we think. But I'm just asking, like, the taxes are insane, and I would like it in writing, that we are not going to be assessed, and we're not going to be forced to hook up to sewer or water. And like I said, there's four of us. I mean, it's a pretty simple matter. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your thoughts. Anybody else wishing to speak publicly on any matter? And again, if you want to hold your thoughts to one of the other public hearings we have, that's fine, too. Okay, we're hearing from Sandra Crest.
Sandra Crest, 2436 County Road V. Just to be clear, I am against TID District Number Seven. The hospitals there, they came in without a TID district. I'm not sure, I don't understand what the value is besides-
That's not true. The hospital built on TID land.
Is there another TID district there? Or is it part of Number Seven? And they're going to get paid back for the utility development?
I'm not here to go into all that.
Okay. So I'm against the TID district. I don't think it's needed for this. If the developer wants to do it, obviously, they have the land. Go ahead and put it in. But I'm not seeing the value of the TID district. Right now, you got six of them. It'd be nice to know as a citizen, or, you know, a member of the village, how utilized they are. How full are they? You have so many acres. How many acres have functioning businesses and homes on them? Maybe that's something to report to the citizens. I'm, I don't see the value in this. It doesn't feel like you've reached out to the people that's going to be affected. The one neighbor didn't even know the street might come by him. So I'm against it. Good luck.
Okay, any other last folks wanting to speak about anything for this batch of public comment? Okay, there being nobody else, we'll close public comment, and we'll get on to the next agenda item, Consent Agenda. Trust to you it.
Mr. President, I make motion to adopt the items on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So from here, let's go on to new business. We've got the public hearing regarding the Village of Mount Pleasant 2023 budget. And we'll start with an address from Administrator Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm thrilled that we have folks in the audience tonight because there is some very good news with this budget. The most important thing that I have to say to open the budget hearing is that the rate is going down 49 cents. The rate last year was $6.75. The rate for this budget is $6.26. For historical context, we had to go a full 13 years back for a lower rate. The rate for 2020, the rate was $6.63 for 2019, the rate was 6.63. For 2018, the rate was 7.03. For 2017, the rate was $7.32. For 2016, the rate was $7.84. For '15, the rate was $7.53. For 2014, the rate was $7.33. For 2013, it was again 7.33. For 2012, the rate was $7.42. For the 2011, the rate was $6.63. For 2010, the rate was $5.83, which is lower, it's lower for, a little bit higher than that for 2023. So that's a full 13 years back to get us to the rate of $6.26. You might be asking yourself, where do we compare with our neighbors? Our finance director did a little research today. We are at $6.26. That's if you approve this budget tonight. The City of Racine is at $13.58 for the budget next year. The Village of Sterdavent is at $7.12. Caledonia's budget hearing is next week. Traditionally, they're lower than us, but I'm not sure. We're going down 49 cents to $6.26. We'll have to see what happens with them next Monday. I'd like to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about tax increment district parts of our budget, since I know there's a lot of members of the audience tonight, and a lot of you are at our CDA meetings. So I know there's lots of questions about what's in our, our TID districts. What I can report to you is that all of our TIDs have a positive cash flow. That's all of our TIDs. All five TIDs. TID six is new, but all five TIDs have a positive cash flow. There have been questions about what our TIDs fund. TID one has funded about five and a half million dollars to construct public roads, roads that we built and that are paid for, no debt. TID number two built $1 million in public roads, and also funded about one and a quarter million dollars cash for building Campus Park. That's less that we had to borrow, less debt. TID five is paying for six cops and one fire inspector. It has also funded three cop cars and one fire truck. Fire trucks on average are more than a million dollars, and TID five funded that. All of our TIDs help the levy by funding part of my salary. They fund part of staff, finance staff time. They fund part of our clerks' time. They fund part of community developments' time as appropriate. It depends upon the amount of time we spend on those parcels, on those TIDs. That further defrays the cost to the taxpayers. It might be a small amount, but every bit of what those TIDs fund makes a difference. Now, here's the great news for Sandra Crest, who just asked a little bit about those TIDs. Four of our TIDs are closing soon. That's four of the five. TID number one will close in 2026. TID number two will close in 2028. TID number three in 2030, and TID number four in 2027. This will further drop our tax rate. I'll probably be retired, but this will further drop our tax rate. That's a very important piece of information for all of us in this room that live in Mount Pleasant. But for TID financing, but for TID financing, the village would not have $116 million in value in TID one, $145 million in value in TID two, $34 million in TID three, or $59 million in TID four. All of this, I think we all can agree, is great for our bottom line. So what the staff is asking you tonight is for approval of this budget.
Thank you, Administrator Murphy.
You're welcome.
So from here, I believe we move on to the public hearing part of the budget. The following rules apply to a public hearing, and the public hearing related to the comprehensive amendment later in the agenda. If you wish to speak, fill out a public hearing form, which you can find on the table next to the entrance. Once recognized, speakers should come to the podium and identify themselves with their name and address. Please speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers must direct all discussions toward the board. I will not allow interchange between members of the audience and the speaker. Please do not interfere with nor interject comments while another person has the floor. Please keep all comments on the particular item before the board, and no longer than five minutes. And finally, please turn off or mute all electronic devices. I don't have, well, I, yeah, I've got Travis signed up. Is anybody else signed up to speak on the budget hearing, which is what we're into now? Travis, if you'd like to come up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Travis Yonkey, 103 Trellis Lane, Mount Pleasant. Again, here to speak about the budget tonight, I want to thank Ms. Murphy for her nice summary of the benefits we're getting here tonight. But honestly, it's hard for me, not being a finance guru, and only having had the budget since Friday afternoon publicly available, to get to the bottom-
Not true. The budget has been available for over a month.
Yeah, that was true. It was placed on Journal Times website without a public notice. That's the public notice on one of their small pages, and wasn't publicly available as far as the 130 pages, which I would like to have seen prior to tonight's budget. To that fact, again, not sure how the numbers are coming up, but-
Could you hold just a minute, Travis?
At the, when we did the budget workshops, which was in October, I don't know if you were available-
I watched all five hours.
We had a copy that was here in this room, and has been since that time.
Okay. Then I'll make note of that. The next year, I'll come up to get a hard copy.
Absolutely. We'd be delighted. If you could join us for the budget hearings, that would be great.
I have a full-time job, and I can't come in the middle of the afternoon. But if I could get my three minutes in, then you guys can respond if you don't mind.
He'll take this off. It actually begins at 4:00, and we finished up, I think, at about 7:00 PM on two nights of the budget hearing.
I guess I'm not here to argue semantics, but again-
Well, we just wanted to clarify the record because what you said was inaccurate.
I'm sorry if you took it that way. I was not arguing with you.
The point of the budget is, it's still gone up three and a half percent since last year. So again, maybe the tax rates have changed, the numbers have played out a little bit better, that can be said tonight. But, you know, my understanding is the times are hard, inflation's up, we're all aware of it. And from taking a quick look at the budget over the weekend, this three and a half percent raise comes from a lot of other additional raises I see throughout, mainly when it comes to a lot of the salaries that are getting paid up here at Mount Pleasant Hall. The fire chief's salary has gone up 6.2% in the last year, and that's actually a total of 14.25% over the past three years. The police chief's salary has gone up 6.2% in the last year, 12, over 12 and a half percent in the last three years. The assessor has actually gotten a 9.7% raise in the last year, and that amounts to a 15.6% raise over the last three years. So these totals are $16,000 a year, $14,000 a year, and $32,000 a year, plus some change. I don't know how many of us in the last three years have gotten that big of a raise. But again, times are tough, so I guess these folks need bigger paychecks to help get through those times. The point being here is, it'd be nice if we could get a better understanding of where all the money is going, because it's getting, like I said, the budget's gone up. You know, maybe, as Adam mentioned, you know, the rates are, look good, but our taxes have gone up substantially every year over the past several years. And just, again, a quick look at this, it looks like there's a lot of salaries getting paid and going up. The TID salaries are hidden in there as well, and I just want to make sure that in the future, again, I'll make note of coming up and getting a hard copy in person, but a little bit more transparency would be appreciated in the future. Thank you.
Appreciate your thoughts. Anybody else wishing to speak on the, on the budget?
I'm going to hand one to him, but I don't want to talk to the next discussion or public hearing, if that's right. I'm talking about, you said there's a third one, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so with, with nobody else wishing to speak on the budget public hearing, we can close a public hearing on budget. And from there, we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion, excuse me, discussion, possible action regarding Resolution 13-2022, adopting the 2023 budget for the Village of Mount Pleasant, prepared by the Finance Department and Village Administrator, including setting the tax levy.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 13-2022, adopting the 2023 budget for the Village of Mount Pleasant and setting the tax levy.
Second.
So here, motion and a second. So this is, this is our time to discuss the budget. Does anybody have any questions for either the Finance Director or the Administrator? If I could just ask Administrator Murphy, there was a remark made about how much of the budget goes to salaries and commensurate salary increases and whatnot. Of our budget, what percentage of it is human, human resources, how much of it is related to human resources? And if you can kind of break down the percentage of emergency services versus, you know, the other parts of the operation?
Finance Director, Bob?
I can, I can speak to that. As far as public safety goes, that does represent a very large portion of our operating budget here at the village. It's somewhere over 60%. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. And a big portion of that is going to be wages and benefits. I think it's important to note that we did have a recent wage and comp study that was approved. And to be competitive, there were some increases that did occur. And it's important for us to stay competitive and have the best team that we possibly can here. And the budget process as a whole, relatively smooth. I think Maureen covered it pretty well as far as the rate dropping by 49 cents. Outside of that, yeah, I don't know if there's any more specific questions that-
Can you, Mike, how high, what percentage increase is there in the levy for this budget?
From last year to this year, there's a total tax levy increase of 1.77%. And what that really represents is the operation budget of the village as a whole. And it equates to just over $400,000 over what last year was. Last year was somewhere around $23.7 million, and this year, it went up to- Last year was somewhere around 23.7 million, and this year it went up to about 24.1 million as proposed. So, I mean, relatively responsible budget as far as increasing by 1.77%.
When it comes to salary increases, this is not something that we just give out willy-nilly. I mean, we spend a lot of time and effort going out into the market, paying consultants to to advise us, where are we sitting in the market? Where are we sitting with respect to our peer communities? And it's it's important for us to be somewhere in the midpoint so that we can retain the talent that we have and so that we can attract other talent as people move on and retire and whatnot.
Mr. President, I agree completely. I think that we spent, we really spend a lot of time all year long talking about the budget, don't we? We have quarterly reports from all of our staff and all of the departments under our, under our plan that they need to report in as to how their departments are doing and keeping with the budget and keeping with our strategic plan. We really work all year on it. And what became very apparent to us as a board earlier in the year was that we were losing staff and that right now, given the job market, that our valuable staff, we wanted to make sure that they stayed here. We had some departments that had a couple of people leave here and there, and it's a very competitive job market. And so in order to be able to make sure that Public Works was funded properly and had the staff to plow our roads and keep our sewer system running and and our storm sewer system running and to make sure that our office staff was taken care of, we, we authorized and did spend money on that that study of wages and compensation. And it was very, very thorough. And it compared us to other similar municipalities in our immediate area, as well as throughout the state of Wisconsin. And for the size municipality that we are, almost 30,000 people, being the second largest village in the state, we really needed to make sure that we were continuing to hold the talented staff we had. And those staff, those salary increases overall, although they seem like big numbers when you're talking about, you know, well over 100 people that we employ, the increase in the budget was well worth it. And we all agreed. Those were unanimous votes and discussions when we did the study, as we talked through the study. I think that, Travis, I'm glad to hear you did listen to the workshops that we held for the budget conversa, for the budget discussions because they're very important to us. And we're hoping that, you know, it appears anyway that the rest of the residents that do take advantage of our online meetings also were able to benefit from that because it explains exactly why we're coming up with the budget we are, what the recommendations are from our, our various department heads, and they work on those budgets starting in July. So we're working on it all year long. So in view of the, in view of the condition of our TIF districts and in view of our being competitive, I have complete faith in the budget that we created, and I think we worked hard to do it, as well as our staff.
And if I could add one more item, I've been here now five years, and I remember when I first started, the checking accounts were not being balanced. We had several EEOC complaints, which is why we brought in a consultant. McGrath was the name of the consultant because we, we have to be fair in our pay. We can't decide to, to give an employee because they're male or female a raise. It has to be based on what the market actually is for those various positions. So that's why we engaged McGrath and we updated that study. So this is not a new study. This was something that was worked on before I got here and then finally implemented five years ago, and we keep that up to date to make sure that we're competitive with the other employers that are here in Wisconsin and actually Illinois.
Go ahead, Rob.
I want to echo everything that my colleagues here and and the administrator has very eloquently said. I've been here now five years, and since 2018, our mill rate has gone down from $7.03 to now $6.26. That's cumulative, almost a 1% decrease. This year, as the administrator explained, this budget reflects 49 cent decrease in the mill rate, which is about 7.2% decrease. In this day and time, when the inflation is running over 8%, yes, we are aware of the, of the concerns of the community, but at the same time, when the gas prices are high, the cost of doing business is high, the police and the fire and the, and the slow flows, they have operational costs. They run on the gas. You need the fuel. You need the operational costs. And same thing with the salaries, as we heard. If we don't pay competitive salaries to keep the best people, I believe that the village has one of the most professional staff. If we don't, if we don't pay them, they're going to leave. And then the cost of turnover, like any business, cost of turnover is, is humongous. We should, any good business, that's the, that's the first rule. You don't want to lose the good people. And I don't think that we have anyone that is not a good staff that we can afford to lose. So the way I see is, the role of this board, this village is, number one, is the public safety. Foremost is the public safety. Then the roads, quality of life, building your tax base, increasing your tax base, that's where the TIDS come into picture. We invest in the roads. Look at the campus park, that's quality of life. Operational costs, yes. Operational costs, as we heard, concern about the salaries, like we said. We had done the studies. We want to be competitive. We want to make sure that all our trained, good, professional people, they want to stay in the village of Mount Pleasant. They want to keep our village going. So in short, I look at this not a tax and spend budget, it's an investment community. We are investing in our community, and I, I'm very proud, you know, where we are. We have spent a lot of time, our administrator, she spends almost a whole year working with all the department heads to make sure that we run the village efficiently. I think this village is being run as efficiently and maybe even better than many private entities. We don't have any waste. We are investing in the community, and I'm very proud of that, and and I stand by the budget.
Yeah, I certainly don't see any extravagance in this budget, and later on in our agenda, we'll be discussing a number of police officers' contracts, which have, again, these are, these are represented officers. And it's, and, and, you know, they are looking for an increase, and I believe, you know, once again, without jumping too far ahead, we went out and did the, did the same studies, the same pure groups, and we're not giving away any, we're not giving away the store on, on any of this. We're, we're trying to be responsible, but when 60% of your budget is emergency services, many of which are represented, and, you know, then we add on the highway department, the sewer, the water, the, the home administrative staff, you're, you're probably pushing 80% human resources costs, all who have to get paid. So I'm, I'm very happy with the, with this budget as well. I think it's, I think it's reasonable. I think it's been very considered. It's, you know, it's something that we've discussed at great length. I'm happy where it lands. I'm thrilled that the mill rate is going down 49 cents. I think that's good for all of our residents, and I'm certainly supporting it as well.
I would, I would like to commend Administrator Maureen Murphy and the department heads and Mike, the finance director. They organized the budget presentation when we had our workshops, which were three evenings, two evenings, three evenings, and...
This year.
Two, this year, yeah. And there was a lot of discussion, but everything was so clear and well argued that I think there was very few adjustments that we thought that the board wanted to make. And to speak to the TID too, I think that I've been on the board now a couple of years, so I didn't understand how they worked as well as I do now. Still, not that my depth is that of deep, but I understand that, yes, the developers should be responsible. If they can't make a profit from doing the project, they're not going to do it. But if there isn't enough return on their investment, if the village gives them a little bit to get to that little higher return, that's enough to tip it over. And I wrote down the, to, so that they will do the project because that's the function of the TID is to, for us to provide an opportunity for these developers to do a project that they might not do otherwise. And I was writing down the numbers that Maureen said about the values, that TID one had $116 million in assessed value, and all of the numbers added up to over $350 million in assessed value that has come about because we established these TIDS. And that means 300, you know, that means the tax levy is spread out over an additional, you know, additional owners that will be paying our taxes. So that's part of the reason why the tax levy didn't go up that much either, because it's spread out over all of these additional assessed values. So I'm, I'm very happy with this budget and strongly support it.
Go ahead.
I have a question for the chief and the fire chief. First, Fire Chief, what's the response time for the fire department right now?
Well, we don't have an exact response time because it depends on where it's at, but I'll give you an example. When we built Station 7 over on the northeast side of the village, three years ago now it's been open, that's the EMS station. That station handles about 30% of our EMS calls and probably reduce the response time in that area by three to four minutes for every call.
Okay. And Chief, what's, for law enforcement, what's the response time?
It would all depend on how busy we are at a certain time. One thing we don't do is hold or stack calls. So if we have a squad available, they respond to the call.
It's pretty quick?
Correct.
In comparison to neighboring communities?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have fast response times here. I've not had a problem with any backup of sewage because we, I think our public works department does really good with that. So it's, we've had to get in parity with our neighboring communities as far as payrolls. So yes, some payrolls went up, so we didn't lose good employees. Instead of people coming in here and complaining about payrolls going up, if we have left things the way they were, what would, we would have is people coming in, coming in and complaining about the fire department's response time because they're shorthanded, or the police department's response time because they're shorthanded. So we're keeping in parity with other communities so we can maintain the personnel that we've got, so we can keep the community up to the standard that we have right now. So I'm for this budget. Thank you.
Mr. Hewitt, I'll give you the last word.
No, I have been on the board for a few years, and I have always said that taxes are necessary to pay for the services that everybody wants. You want your fires put out, you want your, your injured picked up and taken to appropriate place to be survived. You also want to have your roads clean, you want to have the snow off the streets as quickly as we can. Everything that we do comes under the taxes, a lot of the stuff you don't even see. And taxes are necessary to provide all of you and all of the other thousands of people and businesses in this community as we are, we spent, several of us were out in La Crosse a few weeks ago at the League of Municipalities meeting. This community is being watched by the entire state, and they are concerned because they can't do what we are doing here, and they can't figure it out why we do such a good job. And we hear those people from all over the state looking to us, how do you guys keep on doing it? Well, we've got very good staff, and we're going to continue to pay those people what they deserve.
Thanks, John. And Anna Marie, I'll give you the second last word.
Thanks. I've been on the board for seven and a half years now, and this entire facility is very different from what it was when I first joined. Far and away, they are heads above all of the surrounding communities. We've had accolades for Maureen's administration plus our department heads, and they put together the best budget, the most responsible, over that period of time that I've been involved. We get many, many compliments because of how positive and forward-looking the village is. So this is a very positive budget.
Okay, so on that note, I'll call the vote for Resolution 13-2022, adopting the 2023 budget. Jill?
Clausen?
Aye.
Doxy?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
Degroot?
Aye. Motion carries, the budget is adopted. So let's move on to item number two, community development. We've got a public hearing regarding the 3528 Meacham Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 22-2. And Robin or Sam, Philson?
Sorry about that, Mr. President, members of the village board. This is a small comprehensive plan amendment along Meacham Road. There's an existing two commercial buildings that take up the southern property, and then there's a home to the north. This comprehensive plan amendment affects the two properties, which are otherwise completely surrounded by the city ever seen. As of now, in the comp plan, they're listed as residential, even though the southern property has existing commercial businesses on it. So this is simply a map cleanup to allow for either residential or commercial on both properties, which should allow the southern property to rezone into commercial and do with it what they will with the existing commercial businesses, you know, lease to new people, split the property, sell it, et cetera, while allowing the northern property owner to keep it as residential, although if they so chose in the future, they could sell it for a commercial property. So this is just a map cleanup and also providing kind of that comp plan flexibility for the two property owners, which are pretty well isolated from the surrounding village in that stretch of the area.
Any quick questions from board? Okay, so I'll now open the public hearing regarding that item, regarding a comprehensive plan amendment for 3528 Meacham Road. And I have nobody signed up on that. And Mr. Sadowski, were you wanting to speak on the, on the TID?
On Section B, there we have approving its plan and establishing its boundaries as well as referring to...
Oh, the next item.
Okay, the next item, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, this is what you're wanting, this is what you're wanting to speak on. So I can...
No. No. It's the next one. He should have talked the public out of me.
He said so.
So let's just close the public hearing for this.
Okay. Interesting. I'll just recognize him for that. Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll pick you up in the, in the next item. So is there anybody else wishing to speak at the, about the 3528? the next item. So is there anybody else wishing to speak at the, about the 38, or excuse me, 3528 Meacham Road Amendment, CPA 22-2? Not hearing from anybody, we'll close, we'll close that item. And then we can move on to Item B, which is Discussion Possible Action on Resolution 14-2022, Creating a Tax Increment District Number 7, Approving Its Project Plan and Establishing Its Boundaries.
Mr. President, I make a motion to...
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Okay, let me recognize Mr. Sodowsky. I'm going, I'm going a little bit out of order on all this. Yeah, we had a little miscommunication. We should have had you at the top of the meeting, speaking at public comment.
Yeah, I was, I was referring to establishing boundaries is what I was referring to in general.
Right, right. And so, yeah, we should have recognized you at the, at the first...
My apologies.
Go ahead. Give us your thoughts.
My name is Rick Sodowsky. I live at 1302 County Road V. In the TID 7, when they established the boundaries, I was not notified that they were going through my property. And I just asked that when you establish boundaries, that you allow people, you let people know other than just assign. I'm okay with the TID. It does not bother me in the least bit. What bothers me is that I was not informed that, and directly involved me. I would like to know when it directly involves me. I put in a pool this summer. I had to pull a permit. I did something on my own property. I had to let you know. I just asked for the same thing when you establish boundaries. And as far as I know, the church was notified because the road goes through there, and the church doesn't pay taxes like I pay taxes. So if you're going to tell somebody that doesn't pay taxes, please tell the person that pays taxes. Also, just recently, I heard a meeting about keeping good people. I've lived in Mount Pleasant my entire life. My parents live here, I live here. I like to think of myself as a good person. So when things like this come up and they affect you, try to keep the good people that live here already. That's all I ask. So, thank you.
Appreciate your thoughts. Motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 14-2022, Creating Tax Incremental District Number 7, Approving Its Project Plan and Establishing Its Boundaries.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Mr. Schultz, I'd like you to address this, but Mr. Sodowsky just mentioned, you know, the road thing. Was this the future road that at some point in time may impact his property that I think was brought out at one of the other hearings?
Yes, that's correct. That would be the project number, if you look at page 27, that would be Project 5 and 6 is where his property lies. So those are later on in the project plan, I'd say they're, they're further, further looking, I should say, but they are the north ones there, Project 5 and 6 on page 27. Oh, sorry, no. That's the wrong location. That's Project 7 in the northeast corner. My apologies.
Which page are we on?
You're on page 27, in the color-coded project numbers.
So it's, for packet numbers, it's 59 for the packet, it's 27 for the plant.
Okay, now we're on the same page. Right, but that road extension would be subject to the property owner wanting to sell, isn't that right, Sam?
Sorry, repeat that.
That road extension would be subject to the property owner selling his property.
Correct, yeah. I think we take his comments in tune. That road will likely bend further north if he doesn't want to sell in the future.
Right.
So that, it depends on the timing of the road, but in, and when he would want to sell his property, but if he didn't, and he's there in, you know, fifteen years when the project is going forward, we would likely bend it northwards in coordination with the larger property behind to the west.
Right, right. When it was originally penciled in, that's where Rick goes, "Oh, my." Okay, so to get, thank you. To get back on track, what other thoughts do you have, Mr. Schultz?
So I'll just give you all the brief rundown. This is a TID Number 7 as a proposed mixed-use district, comprising approximately 510 acres located between Washington Ave, Spring Street, County Road V, and the East Frontage Road. The village would create the district to pay the cost of development incentives, public infrastructure, and other project costs needed to facilitate residential, commercial, and industrial mixed-use development within the area. The project which is kicking this one off is the Advenir Oakley Capital LLC, otherwise known as the Leo Living Project, 374 moderate, 374-unit moderate-density residential development on the 49-acre site just west of Racine Bible Church. The village expects that the balance of the district will develop over its term with approximately 264 acres available for commercial and industrial development and 115 acres additional for residential. In addition to the incremental property value that will be created, the village expects the project will result in short-term employment opportunities related to construction, as well as long-term employment opportunities associated with anticipated commercial industrial uses expected to locate within the district. Other benefits of the project will include the creation of needed housing units, provision of necessary public infrastructure, opportunities for development of commercial property, and provision of retail services to area residents, other economic activity related to construction operation of the project. As you move down in the project plan through Section 1, you'll see the estimated expenditures. What's kicking this off is, as I said, the Advenir Oakley Capital LLC development. That has tentative 7.6 million tied to it in developer incentives for the public infrastructure improvements. And then there's also ancillary projected project costs, capitalized interest costs, net interest costs later on, and those are project-specific.
And Sam, anytime you're ready, we've got Todd Taves from Ellers here. We can certainly recognize him as well to walk us through some of this.
Certainly. Todd wants to go up there while he's moving on up there.
Can I ask a question?
To the front, yeah, I can answer any questions.
So you said that the one that's going to kick it off is the Advenir Leo Living Project?
Correct.
And so on this, on that map, on page 27 or 59, that will be what's in, in the red?
Yes, Project 1, so...
And the other projects, we don't have identified yet. There's, that's, you're just assuming that will, somebody will probably want this piece and somebody will probably want this piece, and so it's chopped up into phases, but...
Yeah, the village staff tried to break up the public improvements for the area into kind of logical projects that surrounded the properties on that map there. That's why there are eight different projects. And like you said, Project 1 is that Leo Living Project, so it includes extension of utilities west from V along Spring Street, and then new public road extensions heading north from Carrington, a new east-west road that'll extend to their property line, and a new north-south road that'll go essentially where the Racine Bible Church's driveway is now.
The interesting thing about TIDS is that we have to, when we're creating this TID, we have to come up with all the projects, which is why the road next to you is being talked about. We have to kind of guess what's going to happen 10, 20 years into the future, because that's how we can use the taxes that are collected within that TID to fund that project. That's why the TID that we have is at TID 2 that's assisting with the campus park financing, because we knew, the group that was here well before we were, were, had enough foresight to look into the future, what will we need if we put in this amount of housing and et cetera. So you kind of have to kind of look into your crystal ball and figure out what's the community going to need. So that's why your road ended up in there. It's not a road that we immediately want to do, but it's a road that we assume the traffic will warrant at the right time. Yeah, gotcha. Yeah. It's a little hard when we have 30,000 people that live here, but there is in the back of the room a way that you can sign up to get our agendas directly emailed to you, so that you can take a look at every meeting agenda that we do going forward. Yeah. But remember, ninety percent of the, ninety, ninety-five percent of the costs that are paid for within the TID are public improvements. There are those important road improvements, the sewer improvements, the water improvements, public parks, et cetera. A small amount is set aside for developers. I think there's been a misunderstanding about that. The, by and large, the biggest, and Todd, you're more of an expert, I've only been doing this 30 years, but I know you've been doing just this for about that same amount of time. That's what the TID, the money in the TID beyond the base value and the increment that's created by all of the new development, that's what it pays for. That's why we're allowed to keep the taxes, just not for the village, but the school district for Gateway and the county. Right?
Correct.
Thank you, Todd.
Todd, I know you have some thoughts on this that you wanted to share with us, but yeah, if you can share those thoughts within the context of, you know, we have people ask, "Why another TID?" out of Mount Pleasant. You know, that'd be appreciated.
Sure, and I'd start by saying Sam and I didn't coordinate on who was going to cover this, and as he was talking, it was like he was reading my notes. So he did a great job of hitting the highlights. A couple of things that I would add, just as a matter of geography, I wanted to note that this district in part overlaps TID 1. So what happens in that case is the parcels that are overlapped, the value that was there in TID 1 as of the first of this year, that tax increment will continue to flow to TID 1, but anything that happens prospectively will flow to the new TID 7. So just wanted to make note of that. And then getting to the question, and also wanted to comment a little bit on the projects. I mean, the reality is that development is expensive, and this TID really is focused on the public infrastructure component. So at least the way the project plan has been developed, this envisions that either, or the preferred method would be for the developer to front the money for the public infrastructure and then be reimbursed on a pay-as-you-go basis, and that is the basis on which this first catalyst project, Leo Living, will be done. Subsequent phases would occur as a developer comes forward, and again, preference would be to use that pay-as-you-go method, but the village could also potentially borrow. But all of the costs in the plan are based on the necessary public infrastructure that has to go into this area to allow for full development. If the developers had to pay for all of that infrastructure that's going to be constructed for the benefit of the general public and dedicated to the village, it makes many projects economically not viable. And the practice the village has followed, and we did it for the Leo Living Project, is we actually require the developer to provide their pro forma, sources and uses for the private development project, their cash flows, and we will look at that, both with and without the requested TIF, to see what those returns actually are. We have people on staff that have backgrounds in real estate development and real estate economics, and they take a look at that and determine, yes, it's warranted, no, it's not, it's warranted but at a lower level. And the expectation would be is that while we've got one project that's going forward and resulting in the TID being created now, that we would do that for each subsequent phase. So just because it's in the project plan does not mean that we will automatically provide everyone that comes forward with an incentive. But again, to the question, this is the way that economic development happens in Wisconsin for a couple of reasons. Again, the costs, if you've got these costs that have to be entirely borne by the private developer, that is a disincentive. But then, you know, also, this is the way that the, all the taxing jurisdictions which ultimately benefit are helping to participate in this. If the village had to bear 100% of the cost for all economic development, the taxing, other taxing jurisdictions will get the benefit for that, but it would be village taxpayers that would be picking up and footing the bill for that. So happy to answer any questions you might have had about the plan, but that would be the extent of the remarks I have beyond what Sam covered.
So again, it's, we make the developer prove that they need the incentive in order to proceed.
That's been the village's practice for a number of years now, correct?
And again, there were questions about why we don't put this development in a different TID. It's generally when someone goes out and buys the land, and then they've already come to us and ask us, right? So it's not as if we can pick up Advenir and say, "We actually want you to build on a different corner."
Right.
They've purchased the land, and they're coming to us saying, "We can't afford to put in the public streets, the sewer, the water, or the parks, or whatever other improvements that we see." And if anybody wants my card, you can call me anytime. You know, we're happy at a staff level to talk to any of our citizens about any of these items.
Todd, I appreciate you, you know, clarifying, you know, what is the point of doing this, you know, in the first place? And at the end of the day, it comes down to, as you mentioned, you know, the TID law has been in place for a long time. That's how development on any kind of a large scale is done. I was reminded earlier today by our council that the statute, the TID statute came to be in 1975. So this, you know, is something that, this practice has been going on for a long time. This is not something that we stumble into willy-nilly. And I have to tell you that we get the best advice to whether we should pursue the formation of a TID through, through our legal channels, through our, through our planners. And at the risk of embarrassing Mr. Taves, Ellers, who, and Todd, who are, who are the best in the business at running the numbers on, you know, if we do this TID, does it make sense? Are the taxpayers protected? Is the TID going to pay for itself in its own way? You know, is it, is it worth doing? Are we rolling the dice on this, or, you know, are we making what we think are very considered and conservative projections so that even if we do err on the, on the side of lean, we, there still is enough time and energy within the TID that it'll pay itself out? Any other thoughts or questions for Todd or anybody else?
Not for Todd, but I do have a couple of comments that I'd like to make.
Sure.
Yeah. Again, to go back to, as I said earlier, it's a budget investment. Back to the TID, if we look at the lineup which we have in front of us, pages 54 to 55, there are areas outside this proposed TID 7, because the state statute allows you to do the development, invest the money from the TID, one half mile within the boundary of the TID. And it lists that this TID will also fund street improvements, water system improvements, sanitary sewer system improvement, and the stormwater system improvement within half mile of the boundary of the TID. Again, the TID allows you the development which otherwise would not be possible. And I think, I keep on saying, there's a big difference between taxing and spending and investing. This is investing in the community. The other thing that I want to make a comment about, there's a misconception, I believe, over the year, because over the years I have been at the Gateway Board for many years, and eighteen years, and the TID. Community has to understand by, TID does not give the developer, the developer doesn't get away. They don't get away from not paying the taxes. The taxes still flow to your community, but his, how they are used to do the development, the infrastructure, like I said, the stormwater, the road, the sanitary system, the utilities. I'll give you an example. When the, the TID 5 was being proposed, this is before I was on this board, at the Gateway Board, we were presented their portion. Without that TID 5, the land in that area, Gateway portion of the taxes would have been $86,000 a year. Okay, I'm going back, of course, now this year. So the TID for 20 years, it means 86,000, I was just doing my calculation, that mean Gateway would be losing 1.72 million dollars that mean Gateway would be losing one point seven-two million dollars of the taxes because now we have the TID, because that money is not going to go to that. But when the TID closes, the forecast was Gateway will be getting one point five million dollars of extra taxes one, every year. So you lose one point seven-two million over twenty years, and you get one point five million when the TID closes. It pays for it just over one year. My point is, when the TID is open, that funding is used for the development, but when the TID closes, the benefits to the community are humongous. I wanted to bring that so that, you know, so you can put your arms around that, this is how the TIDs work, and obviously, one has to make a decision, you know, how many TIDs, and I believe that with this one, we probably are in good shape there to, to continue the investment in our community.
Especially knowing that four of the TIDs are closing very soon.
Yeah, yeah, especially because, you know...
Todd, we talked about that TID one is closing in twenty-twenty-six.
Absolutely.
TID four is closing in twenty-twenty-seven, and TID two is closing in twenty-twenty-eight, and then finally, TID three in twenty-thirty. So within the next seven years, those four TIDs are going to be closing.
And then the, the tax, the additional taxes that have been, that will be generated by the, you know, addition to the assessed value will flow to Racine County, Gateway, Racine Unified School District. So they haven't been getting them during this time.
Right.
But as soon as they close, then they'll get a big, a big number then.
And the state is so smart, tax increment districts are something that was created through the state statutes. There's actually a mechanism to make school districts whole, so even that is taken care of. So each and every time Ellers and Mike Harrigan, one of the folks that worked at Ellers and had Todd's job before Todd, works with the state legislators about fixing it, fixing the, the areas within the TID law that need fixing, like what happens to the school district. They're not going to get the taxes that are within that TID because it's going to pay for the roads, the sewers, that we don't have to pay for because they benefit that TID, and making sure that those school districts are held harmless. So they increase state aid to those school districts to make up the difference.
Mike Harrigan was around for a long time. Did he have anything to do with the writing of the original TID law back in nineteen seventy-five?
No, he would have been a young man at the, at that time.
But he is helping now assist with some of the tweaks that we're going to do for housing and all the others.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Todd, thank you for coming in tonight. I'm looking at page thirty-one of your presentation to us in regards to this TID seven, and I see that in the year two thousand twenty-three, the total construction, annual total for assessed value for just twenty-twenty-three alone is sixty-three million dollars. And that they have, their, their units are counting in one through forty, forty-one through eighty, eighty-one through one-twenty, et cetera. What happens to the projections if they go into the middle of the year and they see that interest rates are very high, lumber prices are very high, and at that point, they're already engaged in a development agreement with us, which has certain obligations of theirs to perform in order to be able to be compensated through the pay-as-you-go option or alternative. But what happens to the TID if they, let's say they only build half of those?
I can't speak to the terms of the development agreement, and I'm not sure of the status of that, so I defer to the village attorney in terms of any stipulations or requirements to earn the pay-go that are in the agreement or being contemplated. But strictly from a mathematical standpoint, you're going to have less cash flow. Now, in this case, the, the first phase, or I should say the first phase, the Leo Living Project, the first development phase of the TID, is expected to generate the, the figure you see on that particular sheet of eighty-seven point seven million. The corresponding incentive that reimburses for infrastructure is seven point six million. So, you know, even if there was half the value and you still provided the entire incentive, it would cash flow over the twenty-year term of the TID.
Okay, that, that was my, that's exactly what I was getting at. You know, just as a comment, TID, TID districts with the residential component are not new to TID, but they are newer to us. And I guess as an example, I, I look back and I think of the year two thousand when we had a huge building boom starting, and the village of Mount Pleasant was seeing developers come in and build hundred-unit, two-hundred-unit subdivisions. And, and in those years, with the prices of construction materials, et cetera, we would oftentimes see a developer not hesitate to put in a million dollars' worth of infrastructure. You know, we, our, our building department was, was going through four hundred building permits at a time, and it was just a very different economic time. Now, and we were building roads at that time for two hundred and fifty dollars in the year two thousand, two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a lineal foot. Today, we're building roads at twelve hundred dollars a lineal foot, and the developers are no longer financially able to fund those off-site projects or the enormity of those extensions of utilities. And so I think that, that this is a very interesting TID. It's in an area that's a little different than I would have anticipated our growth, but it is definitely, the housing is definitely needed, and without the help of the district, I like the fact that it has been divided up into eight projects so that, you know, it's a long-term project. None of these roads are going to go in tomorrow, they're going to be all subject to neighborhood planning and, and the developers coming in, I shouldn't say none of them, but many of them. So this is a tough one, you know, this is a tough one. It was unexpected, and, and yet, we need the housing, do we not? We need the housing in our community. People want to live here, and we don't have enough places for them to go. So we continue to create them, and the TID is the tool to do it. And I'm glad to see that, that, that was very important to me, that with the enormity of the number of units to be built in the first year and even two years, that what happens if they don't build them all, right? And the, the answer is clear, it still funds itself, and that's the critical point of the TID. We don't want it to fail so that it comes back onto us or the taxpayers, our taxpayers, to have to be burdened with that expense.
Any other thoughts or questions for Mr. Taves? Excuse me, sir, you spoke at the, at the top of the meeting. I cannot recognize you while this is in front of the board for deliberation now, sorry. Any other thoughts? John, did you have something?
Well, going back, just if I could, please, what Nancy just said about housing development and things like that, quickly, if we could have Sam or Rob and just simply say, "How many housing units, developments, or however we want to do that, how many hundreds or thousands more places do we need in this community?"
That we need? So the, we, every year, we release an annual housing report, as is required by the state. That's based on completing the housing element of our comprehensive plan, which is also required by the state. In the projection last year, this year's report isn't finished yet, but in the projections last year, which is also on our village website, we basically had to permit and construct two hundred and seventy-four units of housing every year for the next thirty years. Now, every development that goes through Plan Commission doesn't make it to a building permit. Oftentimes, we're, you know, approving more projects than actually make it to reality. On top of that, obviously, the housing market waxes and wanes over time, so that's a, the set average over thirty years. But gives you an example, we're adding about another eight thousand or so, seven thousand housing units projected in the next thirty years to keep up with growth in the area, demand, projections from population that come from the Regional Planning Commission.
So that's an example why we need to keep on going.
Good. All good? Okay, on a housekeeping note for the clerk, trustee Doxy is excused because he had another meeting that he had to get out to, so he left at about seven o'clock for, I think, a seven-ten meeting that he had, so he'll be excused from the rest of the meeting. So on the matter of resolution fourteen dash twenty-two, creating tax increment district number seven, roll call, please.
Claussen?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, motion carries, six-nothing. So let's move on to some human resource issues. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we've got discussion, possible motion to approve agreement on the Mount Pleasant Police Officers Association of the Wisconsin Professional Police Association.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Mount Pleasant Police Officers Association of the Wisconsin Professional Police Association as presented earlier.
Second.
Motion and second. Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the village board. The current collective bargaining agreement with the Mount Pleasant Police Officers of the Wisconsin Professional Police Association expires December thirty-first of this year. The successor agreement before you is a four-year term running from January first, twenty-twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. The wage schedule consists of a two percent increase on January first, twenty-twenty-three, an additional two percent increase on July first, twenty-twenty-three, and then a three-point-five percent increase on January first of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-twenty-six. I do want to mention an important part of the discussions with the wages had to do with health insurance. The police officers did make concessions, and they are paying a higher percent of the total premium cost, which is similar to what the South Shore Fire Department will be doing and the rest of the village staff.
This should be well on everybody's top of their mind because we had a closed session about this at the committee of the whole meeting just prior to the board meeting, but anybody have any last thoughts or, or comments for Mrs. Cole? Or anybody else?
Well, I'd like to congratulate the negotiating team, both on the village side and also on the, on the Police Officers Association. I think it's a, it's a good agreement. It's a, instead of like having one year or two years, a four-year long-term agreement, and again, it takes care of our police, and, and they made some concessions, so it's a minimal situation.
Again, I think part of the, Mr. President, I think part of what we, Mary made clear was that, and, and the chief, was that, again, our goal is to retain our employees and, and to make sure we're getting good employees, and the recruitment out there right now is, is tough for everybody. So I think they did a great job of, of, it was in our, all the, all the salaries have been accounted for in our budget, so we, we knew they were coming, and I think they did a great job, and, and we hope that the police officers are happy to present and stay, keep us safe, keep us safe in Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, the spending levy goes up a little bit every year because this is an excellent example of some things that get baked into the cake, and so it's, the budget does increase commensurate to wages. In this case, wages for represented police officers. But we're, we're told by all groups that this is, this is acceptable to, to the union. I think the board finds it acceptable, it's in the budget, it's, so I think we're good. So on the matter of the police officers agreement for the represented officers, roll call, please.
Claussen?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, the motion carries. We have a similar agreement with the Mount Pleasant Sergeants Association.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Mount Pleasant Sergeants Association as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Back to Ms. Cole.
As well as with the Mount Pleasant Police Officers contract, the Mount Pleasant Sergeants Association contract does expire at the end of the year, so we were able to come up with an agreement that really mirrors what the, the police officers will be getting, so it's really identical contracts, it's just one is for the sergeants.
Okay.
It's kind of a rinse and repeat thing. So unless anybody has anything, I'll call a vote on that. Roll call, please.
Claussen?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, motion carries. So let's go down to item six, trustee Claussen.
Actually, there's nothing to report at this time. We will have a meeting towards the end of the month.
Thank you. Guess we need one last motion.
Mr. President, move for adjournment.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye?